All right. I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. We're just about to get started. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just pray and thank you for this day you've given us. I pray and thank you for the past weekend to be able to spend time with family and observe the military. I pray, Lord, that you will be with the citizens of Springdale, be with all of its employees, and be with this council tonight as we address things on the agenda and will give us some wisdom and guidance and leadership. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Mike. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. We'll begin things by having our city clerk call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're -- we'll move right into item four on the agenda, the comments from citizens. If we have any citizens that would like to make brief comments for the council tonight, considering any items that are not on tonight's agenda, I'd welcome you to come at this time. Do we have anybody? Anybody outside the room, guys? Don't see anybody. All right, thank you then. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. And Scott is here with the economic -- Scott Edmondson with the Economic Development Report.
Good evening. I left each of you a copy of -- this was for the first quarter or so for the Economic Development Report. Just wanted to know, all things considered, things are holding their own. We have been working with several companies, out of the area companies, that are looking for locations in Springdale. So we do have some things going on on the industrial side. We've got a couple of existing manufacturers that are looking at possible expansions. So they seem to be staying busy and doing well and looking toward the future. Earlier in the year, through March, our job numbers were up. We had 487 new jobs through the end of March according to Division of Workforce Services. Of course, obviously, since then, things will be impacted quite a bit by the economic shutdown. Sales tax receipts, though, are doing very well, and I think the May numbers that came in on Friday were $1,429,000. That represented a 7.3% increase over May of 2019.
Right. Those were for the March collections, so about half that month, things were -- we were into the shutdown.
Very good.
So we were all very pleased about that.
On our business and retention and expansion visits, things, we had about 15 made before things came to a halt. But since then, the chamber staff, we have made over 2,000 calls to Springdale businesses, manufacturer, all across the spectrum during this time since the middle of March, providing assistance for the CARES Act assistance, PPE supplies. So we've, again, we've fielded over 2,000 contacts with our local businesses, and we continue to do that daily. The announcement, Highlands Oncology Group, they're slated to move into their new facility on the west end of Don Tyson, hopefully by the end of, starting in the end of June, and they'll have over 200 employees housed in that facility. Gammon Fish Education Center, construction's continuing on it, and according to, Gammon Fish spoke with them on Friday, and they're hoping for an opening around October of this year. So, and some dirt work has begun on the new US Abel building out near Don Tyson and I-49, and then again on the new medical facility just north of Children's Hospital, dirt work's taking place at this time. So, is there any questions? Appreciate it.
Good deal. Any questions for Scott? All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, council, item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure?
Move for A and B.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for A and B. Roll call, please.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
All right, item eight. We do have some new information today by way of an update, really, on your agenda item concerning the ordinance ratifying petition for consolidation, and I'll turn it over to Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, petitions were presented both to the city of Springdale and to the city of Bethel Heights regarding proposed consolidation of Bethel Heights into the city of Springdale. Last week, the city clerk for the city of Springdale certified the sufficiency of the petitions provided to the city of Springdale, that they contained at least the required number of signatures, which was 2,713. City clerk certified that, communicated that fact to the petitioners representative, as is required by the statute. And you do have an ordinance on the agenda because we communicated this fact as well to Bethel Heights and asked them to provide us with their certification, as they only had to certify 54, 55 signatures. We actually did an independent verification of that petition, and there were 82 signatures, which is far more than what's needed by the statute. But despite that fact, Bethel Heights had not certified their sufficiency of their petition, so on Friday, I filed a petition for writ of mandamus with the Benton County Circuit Court, asking the court to order them to comply with the statute. Conference call was held this morning with the judge, who's been assigned this case, as well as with the attorney for the petitioners and the attorney for Bethel Heights, and it's been set for a hearing on the morning of June 5, 2020. So it would be my suggestion that this ordinance be tabled to the June 9 meeting, as I hope to get a favorable ruling on June the 5th. If you have any questions, let me know. I believe the newspaper over the weekend did a really good job of describing what's going on as well. And also Denise brought tonight, she brought you a copy because it was kind of hard to read in the packet, but she did bring you a copy of the certificate where she certified the sufficiency of the petition and also the letter that was communicated to the petitioner's attorney, Mr. Watkins.
Get any indication as to why Bethel Heights thinks they don't have to?
Actually, 20 minutes after we filed our petition with the court, there was a letter that was sent to Mr. Watkins that I was copied on that was a one paragraph statement that said that they would not, Bethel Heights would not certify the sufficiency of the petition because it had one signature on there.
From Lowell.
From Lowell, which, okay, throw that one out. So that also that the petition did not have the verification. It's our position, no verification is required under the statute. And also that they were told that perhaps some folks did not know what they were signing despite the fact that the petition that they signed at the top clearly states what the purpose is, as is required by the statute. I don't believe that that response is anywhere near sufficient under the statute. I don't think it's fair to the petitioners, so that's why we're still pursuing this writ of mandamus.
Are the petitioners part of that lawsuit?
They are. It's actually styled city of Springdale and Charlene Bowen on behalf of the qualified electors of the city of Bethel Heights, because she was the individual designated on the petition when it was filed, both in Springdale and Bethel Heights, her and her attorney, Mr. Watkins.
Right.
Right. Yeah, this is a copy of the petition, which we also, in our petition for the writ, we also attached a copy of the petition that was presented to Bethel Heights. So it's, like I said, we did an independent verification. In about 30 minutes, we were able to determine that there were 82 valid signatures. Took us quite a bit longer, given that we had to look at almost 4,000 signatures, but we were able to do so, so I feel Bethel Heights has had more than enough time to do this. So that's where we stand now. I'm still hopeful that Bethel Heights will allow the citizens to exercise the right that's afforded them under the statute to decide this issue. It's not for me to decide, it's not for any other elected official to decide, it's up to the people of Bethel Heights and Springdale to decide this issue, one way or the other. We'll live with the result, one way or the other. But we just got to get to that point. We can't pass this ordinance that's before you until Bethel Heights performs their obligations under the statute, and that's what we're asking the court to have them do.
So I'd entertain a motion to table this until our next council meeting.
Move.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? Anyone else need to speak to this issue? All right, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
And the date on that council meeting?
June 9.
Okay, June 9. Thank you. All right, item nine, is a resolution confirming an appointment to the Advertising and Promotion Commission, city of Springdale. And so I've read the resolution. This is, there was a resignation, an opening caused by resignation. Jim Bryant moved out of the city, and the A and P Commission voted to appoint Mr. Alex Bond to fill that seat, and so I'm bringing that to you for your consideration and approval.
I move the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry. The makeup commission, I know there's so many people from restaurants, so many people from, do you know what that is?
He's with USA Pizza.
Yeah, he's with USA Pizza, but my understanding is, if I heard right, this is not, this is not, this connection is still more of a open.
A open position.
Position, yeah. But it just so happens, but you're right, there are, there needs to be someone from the different industries on the commission. But that's the way I understood it, and Scott's gone, but.
Did you mean to read what it is in the ordinance? The ordinance says four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and the owner or manager shall reside in the city. Then it says one member shall be from the public at large who shall reside in the city. Then, well, then it says the other four, at least three of whom shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants, which this individual is.
Right.
And two members of the commission shall be members of the city council, which we've took care of that last month, I think.
Right. But I believe this one is the open position, if I heard right at the meeting. I don't know, Mike, did you hear that, or?
I understood it. He's in the restaurant business, but it doesn't technically fall into what's typically considered as a sit-down restaurant.
Okay. All right. And we have a motion, a second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, Denise.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there further questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 11, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
We have one rezoning request tonight. This is for a 1.5 acre tract. It's kind of a little triangle that was left over when 49 was widened many years ago. Didn't belong to the property owners on each side. It has since been purchased by the property owners on each side of it, and they're requesting to rezone it to C5, which the surrounding property is on the same. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An order submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring emergency."
Please, the order do pass.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there further questions or discussion? Anyone in the public need to speak to this? Okay, Denise.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief. Item 13, Street and Capitol Improvements Committee Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Good meeting last week, Street and CIP, and we have five resolutions and one ordinance on the attended night, and all of them were brought from the committee record for approval. And the first one I'll go ahead and turn over to Ernest, because that's a condemnation.
This is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a condemnation lawsuit wherein Oak Grove Properties LLC is the defendant for the Jean George Boulevard, Blue Avenue to Elm Springs Road project, project number 18BPS1, tracks 56C and 56D. This is the one that there was a recent sale, cadda corner to this property, that the property owner made a settlement offer to settle based upon that sale.
Could the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing the settlement of a condemnation lawsuit wherein Oak Grove Properties LLC is the defendant for the Jean George Boulevard, Blue Avenue to Elm Springs Road project, project number 18BPS1, tracks 56C and 56D. This is the one that there was a recent sale, cadda corner to this property, that the property owner made a settlement offer to settle based upon that sale.
Could the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, Denise.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire portion of land from Hot Hogs LLC for the 56th Street South Phase One project, project number 18BPS11. And this for the counteroff of the city paid a total of some $135,000, and his recommendation from the city attorney to pay the additional funds.
This is based off a more recent appraisal that the property owner provided us prior to us filing the condemnation action on this one.
Could the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief. Item 13, Street and Capitol Improvements Committee Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Good meeting last week, Street and CIP, and we have five resolutions and one ordinance on the attended night, and all of them were brought from the committee record for approval. And the first one I'll go ahead and turn over to Ernest, because that's a condemnation.
This is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a condemnation lawsuit wherein Oak Grove Properties LLC is the defendant for the Jean George Boulevard, Blue Avenue to Elm Springs Road project, project number 18BPS11. And this for the counteroff of the city paid a total of some $135,000, and his recommendation from the city attorney to pay the additional funds. This is based off a more recent appraisal that the property owner provided us prior to us filing the condemnation action on this one.
Could the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief. Item 13, Street and Capitol Improvements Committee Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Good meeting last week, Street and CIP, and we have five resolutions and one ordinance on the attended night, and all of them were brought from the committee record for approval. And the first one I'll go ahead and turn over to Ernest, because that's a condemnation.
This is a resolution authorizing the settlement of a condemnation lawsuit wherein Oak Grove Properties LLC is the defendant for the Jean George Boulevard, Blue Avenue to Elm Springs Road project, project number 18BPS11. And this for the counteroff of the city paid a total of some $135,000, and his recommendation from the city attorney to pay the additional funds. This is based off a more recent appraisal that the property owner provided us prior to us filing the condemnation action on this one.
Could the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have another resolution. It's a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to apply for ST BGP A funding for a right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation for Don Tyson Parkway from Jean George to Highway 112. This is the matching fund.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Brad's here. I think you had some questions on the next one, but they're similar. We're going to apply for both of these. If you all approve both of these, it's doubtful we'll get both of them, but we're going to try, if you all approve both of them. Any questions on this one? All right, Denise.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Perry's eight zero.
Okay, we have another resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to apply for ST BGP A funding for acquisition of right-of-way relocation franchise utility for Jean George Boulevard from Don Tyson to Johnson Mill Road.
This is for the next phase, the phase two of Jean George South toward Johnson, and I think the question came up about where does Springdale end and Johnson begin? Of course, Johnson is paying, will be paying for their portion. And did they, Brad, do you know if they've met yet to approve this funding?
They have a rule.
Okay.
Phase two is almost all in Springdale.
It's almost all in Spring, so this one is almost all in Springdale. Okay.
I don't need it.
I'm okay. Any questions for Brad?
Phase two, almost all in Springdale is a little bit vague because the roundabout is on the south end. Is all of phase two in Springdale?
Yes, except for this little piece over on 56th Street at the bottom. Here's the asphalt operation that was there and the fence line right across.
Get into the mic, please, Brad.
Right across the north side of that is the city limits. So you can see there's a little bit of 56th Street.
Yeah, but we're not talking about 56th Street.
Well, this project will have to include a connection from the exist, I'm not looking
Here's eight zero.
And next we have another resolution. It's a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Springdale to apply for STBGP A funding for a right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation for Don Tyson Parkway from Jean George Highway 112. This is the matching fund.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Brad's here. I think you had some questions on the next one, but they're similar. We're going to apply for both of these. If you all approve both of these, it's doubtful we'll get both of them, but we're gonna try if you all approve both of them. Any questions on this one? All right, Denise.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
How.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Thank you.
The next one is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Springdale to apply for STBGP A funding for acquisition of right-of-way relocation franchise utility for Jean George Boulevard from Don Tyson to Johnson Mill Road.
This is for the next phase, the Phase Two of Jean George South toward Johnson, and I think the question came up about where does Springdale end and Johnson begin? Of course, Johnson is paying, will be paying for their portion. And did they, Brad, do you know if they've met yet to approve this funding? Okay. But... It's almost all in Spring. So this one is almost all in Springdale. Okay. I don't, I don't need it. I'm okay. Any questions for Brad?
Phase two, almost all in Springdale is a little bit vague because the roundabout is on the south end. Is all of Phase Two in Springdale?
Yes, except for this little, little piece over on 56th Street at the bottom. Here's the asphalt operation that was there and the fence line right across.
Get into, get into the mic, please, Brad.
Right across the north side of that is the city limits. So you can see there's a little bit of 56th Street.
Yeah, but we're not talking about 56th Street.
Well, this, this project will have to include a connection from the exist, I'm not looking at it, but from the existing 56th Street over to the roundabout.
And part of.
That'll be part of this phase.
And Johnson has asked that 56th Street all the south to Johnson Mill Boulevard be removed. There's a section down there with deep road ditches and a steep.
That part is in Phase Two then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they've gotta, they've gotta make that connection so it can continue to be used, so. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Anybody else need to speak to this? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
How.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Okay, and next we have a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service contract for Kendrick Avenue Street Improvement Project to Engineering Services Incorporated.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. There are some... Yeah, there are some blanks that we want to be sure everybody's... Wyman, have you, do you have that information? Oh, Perry's here also. Perry, you can also address these. There's some blanks. This is the resolution that, that was approved, or there was a resolution approved by the Public Facilities Board to enter into the agreement to, for us to provide the match for the $1.5 million EDA grant. We, that's currently estimated about $1.7 million. And, and then as, as they, as the Public Facilities Board sells property, they've got, you've got an out, some outstanding bonds right now. So explain how this is not a, this is not a payback for what we're doing. This is, but it is a, it is a contribution that will come as they sell property and at, for a future project yet to be designated by the city.
You know, when you look at the statute of the Public Facilities Board, they can do a lot of infrastructure and a lot of projects around the community, including wastewater, healthcare facilities, parks, roads, parking lots, parking decks, and the list goes on and on of what a Public Facilities Board can actually do. It's not legal for us to borrow money from the city when you're using bond money. That's illegal. So what the agreement is, you use the bond money, build, finish the project. 3.3, 3.2, 3.3 million is the estimates for the total project. We've got a million and a half grant from the Economic Development Administration, and if we can use the gap, get the gap covered by bond money, then the Public Facilities Board can, down the road legally, make a contribution at your direction as to what infrastructure or what project you would like to see a sizable contribution. $2 million is the agreed to terms. The only, the only caveat is, the Public Facilities Board still has about $625,000 in bonds that we issued or that were issued about five years ago when we bought this 87 acres out by Kendrick Avenue. And so as land is sold, all of our land, at least 50% of all of our land goes to retire those bonds. And so we have theoretically, if we sell land in the old industrial park, once we sell a million three, then we could have our debt retired by using 50% of that, and then we would start collecting monies at that point. Once the bonds are paid off that are currently in place by the Public Facilities Board, then the Public Facility Board agrees to put 100% of the money generated by land sales off of Kendrick towards this project at your direction. So it was a, it was a pretty, pretty easy conversation to have. The only caveat is, there is 625,000 of debt. That would have to be the first line of debt, and then the contribution within accumulate once that's paid off.
But you're using 50% of the sale to go toward the 600,000. You're not using 100%.
The agreement, when, when the bonds were issued, any land sold off of the Kendrick Farm, 100% of those proceeds go to the debt, and all the other land we have, 50%. And we've paid it down from a million four down to 625. So it's over five years.
So the Ken, any, any land on the, the old Kendrick property, 100% goes
Yes sir.
toward retirement of that
Yes sir.
bond, so.
Yes sir. Another way to look at it would be, at this point, there would be 2.6 million out there that we would be committed for, and so as we sell that land, and that farm will generate somewhere in the $4 million range of, of sales over the next several years. So it shouldn't be a problem at all in retiring that.
What's the interest? How many people have had input to bond? Have y'all had a good deal of interest?
Ah, yeah, we've got one project that's been postponed because of the environment we're in right now. Seventeen acres, which would generate a million seven by itself. So that, and 150 jobs. So that's a pretty good project that we, we're meeting with them this week to make sure everything's still on go. So there are, there's a lot of movement. This, Kendrick Avenue is Phase One of the improvements. Phase One A is some connectors off of Kendrick that we'll have to finance ourselves as we go forward. And I would also say, if, if for some reason the commission down the road decides to do Phase One A and Phase Two of improvements in that 87 acre park, we're probably gonna have to do another bond issue ourselves then. My suggestion would be, let's roll all that together and do one bond issue and take this completely off the table.
Just make a contribution to the city then.
Make the contribution with proceeds. And, and currently, the Public Facilities Board has about a million three in cash, so they're not strapped for cash at all. They have some flexibility on how they can, can work the deal.
I think, I think just standing alone even, this is a, this is a good use of bond money to help match this EDA grant because, because this, as, as this area develops, it will certainly be a plus for the city as well, and create, in job creation and also in, in revenue, so.
Perry may have answered it, but Monday night, committee, I think we were asking also though, if some of this payback money was gonna be from any of the properties we sold, not just Kendrick Farm.
Yes, it will be.
I mean, it's not payback.
It's not a payback. Not alone. Can't be alone. Can't be alone. But the commitment will come as quickly as it can with a minimum of 50% of all land sales.
And it cannot go to the mayor's slush fund, is that correct?
I didn't know that.
We'll check that out.
How about the council's fund? Is that, is that okay?
Mayor, I heard you say matching, that we would match their.
Well, match might not have been the right term.
But Perry said repay whatever is the balance needed. I thought that's what you said.
Right.
It's not, it's not a match per se.
It's not a match.
Uh, we're looking at 3.3 was the, all-in estimate was about 3.3.
So it's more than 1.5?
No, 1.7. It would be.
It's somewhere, Jeff, between 1.7 and 1.8.
And the grant is 1.5.
If the bids come in, it might go up with construction bids. It might go up to 2 million. If that's the case, then whatever it goes up. I would think the Public Facilities Board would be in agreement just to roll that onto the back end of it.
And so, it's in particular to the resolution tonight, are we paying all of the, all of this contract?
Yes.
Yes.
And none of the grants paying any of it?
No.
The engineering, the engineering was held out at the suggestion of the Regional Planning Office. The engineering was held out of the application for the grant because it just really complicates it when they get into looking at the engineering fees and all that.
But it would still be part of whatever our.
Yeah, it's just part of the overall. And again, the overall project was estimated to be about 3.3 million.
Well, I guess we wouldn't have the, well, the number's right. It's estimated to be 1.7 million.
No, for the engineering contract.
Not to exceed 7%. Well, it'll depend on what the, what the cost of the project ends up being. If it's, if it's 1 point, if it's 1.7... Not to exceed 7%.
1.7 is, right now, what we estimate our share is gonna be.
Right.
And then you add the 1.5 to that, and that's what we estimate the project to be.
Right, which would be 3.2. So the 7% would be on the 3.2.
If that's what the cost.
No, it'd be 7% of the construction contract.
Right.
First blank.
That minus the engineering.
So the first blank would be 7%. The second blank would be 1.7. Right?
Thought that's what it was. Yep. That's what I wrote in there Monday night, last Monday night, anyway.
And did you say that the money given, that we get from the sale of the property, it has to be designated?
It'll be, it'll come to the city. It's, the, the resolution the, the Public Facilities Board passed said it would be a contribution to, to a project of the city's choosing. So y'all, the council would decide where that money goes.
As, as it comes in, or does it?
Well, you could designate, you could designate something to save for, or, you know, I, I've, I already told you what I would like to use it for, but that's gonna be up to y'all. But that's not the question tonight. The question tonight is just, are we okay with this?
No.
No, it doesn't have to be.
We have to get the money back first before we worry about what we're gonna do with it.
Right. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be one project.
And it definitely will come in at different.
It will. It'll come in, it'll roll in. So, so if, if there's a project we really want to do, whether it's the one I mentioned or whether it's another, we'd probably have to be in a position to cash flow. Part of that, just knowing that eventually we're going to get this contribution, the total of this contribution. So whatever project it is.
Mayor, the final caveat I would bring up would be, to go forward with this project in entirety, we have to have a, an agreement with the Arkansas Department of Transportation to build an intersection at Kendrick Avenue, which has not been done yet.
Right.
So there's still a, there's still something hanging out there that we're gonna have to get completed, and hopefully that will come to a satisfactory solution.
We're hopeful that RDOT will approve that.
Yes.
Yes.
And what if they don't?
Then the project probably won't be built.
It probably won't happen.
And we'll lose that project of, that $24 million building and that land sale and those 150 jobs too.
It's important to the, it's important to the project that that have, that Kendrick connect with 265.
And that was the leverage, I guess you would use the term leverage with EDA. I mean, we went and applied for the grant because that project needed that interchange. So that helped us in that argument also. But that does have to be done.
So Perry, if this, if that rule doesn't happen with that intersection, what about this?
Then 1.7 is not expended.
If, I'm sorry.
If that grant is not, or the intersection is not approved, then what happens to this resolution at that point?
Well, if the project doesn't happen, then we don't.
Then the 1.7 is not expended then.
Yeah, it just stays in the street bond, or goes to another project. Goes to another street bond project.
So this is just gonna be a placeholder?
No, we, well, yeah, we'll have to pay the engineer, but not, no, if the project isn't done, we don't have a construct, if it's not, never bid, we don't have a construction contract.
So this 1.7 million is just basically will be a placeholder until all the pieces are put together?
No, it's a commitment.
It's a commitment.
Assuming that the other factors are gonna be completed, such as the, the state going ahead and doing the intersection there. And once that happens, it's all part of the same contract. If this, for some reason, the state doesn't do it, we're not obligated to spend the 1.7 million in street bond project money. It stays in our bond.
It's been, it's been in there.
Deducted already.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been showing it, haven't we, Wyman? Well, not in the, not in the proof, but we've been showing it in the estimates that we've, that we've had. We've shown this project.
So this resolution, is it being brought to us early? Because it's, it's for an agreement with Engineering Services, okay? For design of this project, we don't even know if that project's gonna happen yet.
Jim, that's not a bad point. And I would tell you that before hard design engineering is done, we'll have all the approvals.
Yeah.
I mean, we're literally any day going to the, RDOT, so.
I think this is an important step, whether it's 100% necessary or not. I think it's important for our argument to RDOT, and it's important for our EDA grant, just to show that we've, we've got the commitment.
In the EDA grant, we have five years to use that money. So we're not up against a timeline with that. So we do have some time.
Well, all I was getting at is, is making a resolution like this, I mean, as far as a resolution goes, is us being okay to use the 1.7 million. I can take that, I can handle that, but this resolution is for design of this project, we don't even know what's gonna happen.
Well, if we don't get approval from RDOT, we can stop it real quick.
The design, yeah, 'cause we, we, we won't be able to pay for the design of a project that's not gonna happen out of our street bond anyway.
So we're not entering a contract with it?
Not unless it's a.
This is a commitment.
It's proven.
Yeah. Well, it is, we are really.
Well, I want to make sure that contract gives us that out then.
Yeah, let's make sure, Wyman, you gave something else to add? Yeah, could we add a contingency clause?
Sure. The contract's got phases in it that you go through, and one of the first phases is gonna be doing just enough work to file for that request with the Highway Department. And if we don't get that approval, then it stops there.
After the first phase.
So we will be paying some engineering fees though, right now?
Will we be doing it, or will the, will the commission be paying it?
We will. That's what, that's what I asked a while ago.
I believe all the preliminary engineering that needs to be done in order to get approval from RDOT has been done.
It's been done.
We've already covered that. So this would be the design of the road after that approval.
After the RDOT commitment.
Right.
'Cause that's what you're waiting on, is commitment from RDOT.
Yes. And that could be.
Needs to be reflected.
Y'all were just discussing Bethel Heights. Unfortunately, 1,782 square feet of this project are in the city limits of Bethel Heights. That's the complicating factor. So that may go away in 90 days and not be a factor anymore. I don't, I don't know. Or it may be something that RDOT doesn't see a problem with and can work around. But we're cleaning up all the loose ends. That's just, with all, we just want to lay everything on the table.
Mayor, I believe I made the motion for this resolution to pass. I'd like to change that motion with the contingency that the RDOT thing goes through, then the new resolution to pass.
We can add that. Okay, so we'll add a clause for the.
Who is the second?
Uh, I think Kathy seconded. So they've amended that, they've been amended that to include a contingency that RDOT allow the connection.
That's through the intersection.
Allow the connection of Kendrick to the highway, to 265. All right. We have a motion in a second. It's amended. Any other comments or questions? Kay Denise?
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
How.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Here's eight zero.
And last, we have an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a development agreement with Springdale Downtown LLC for sidewalk improvement on East Johnson Avenue, North Spring Street and North Commercial Street to waive competitive bidding and declare an emergency. This is basically to do sidewalks around just east of, or just south of the property here.
Right. You've got the resolution before you. We, we discussed some on Monday night. I don't know that we had any specific questions we needed. It's an amount not to exceed $21,224. This will just pick up and, and utilize the same contractor that Springdale Downtown LLC will be using for their improvements where the old, on the block where the old San Jose Manor was and the Ryan's Building. And this will allow us to take advantage of the contractor on site and add sidewalk to the south side of Johnson Avenue between Commercial and Shallow, or Spring, I'm sorry. That would be a deal, between Shallow and, between Commercial and All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Roll call, please.
How.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
How.
Both the ordinance mercy clause, here's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 14, Parks and Rec Creation Committee, Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week. We've got one item on the agenda. It's actually a guaranteed maximum price for Tyson Park that was part of the bond project. I think we had estimated it about 5 million. It came in at 4,979, 897. It's a resolution accepting guaranteed maximum price for the renovation of Tyson Park Project Number 18B PP2, and it was recommended to move forward with approval.
Would the resolution be adopted?
Okay, we've got a motion and a sec. Got two motions in a sec.
Two motions.
Any other comments or questions? Ready to get this started, I know. Looking forward to it. Okay, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Evans.
Yes ma'am.
How.
Yes.
Jay Cox. Here's eight zero.
All right, good deal. Any, any comments from council members? City attorney?
No, sir.
I don't have anything. I just want to remind, yeah, Colby, if you'll come up, want to remind you about the good sales tax numbers that we got. That was a, that was an unexpected gift that we're very thankful for. Colby?
It was unexpected to everybody except Wyman.
Yeah, Wyman.
We had an office pool, and Wyman somehow predicted that we'd be up 5%, and all of us were on the negative side. We have been using this forecast from Michael Pakow that we've referenced, and we said last week, we're finally gonna be able to give you real numbers instead of forecasts. We ended up beating his forecast by 6.3% for the month of March, which is pretty significant. I know some of our neighbors saw significant declines in their tax revenue. One of the interesting things that I noticed, if you look at all the NAICS codes of where our sales tax money is coming from, full-service restaurants, we're only off $3,000 from the average for the entire year. And I think we had a lot of push on social media to support locally, support your restaurants. Gift cards were being bought. Groups were all over on social media about spend your money at the Springdale Restaurants, and I think that Springdale rallied and made that happen. We were up 7.31% for the month of March over last year. We don't have the official number yet, but it looks like we're gonna probably be around 1.4 million in unreserved CIP when this money gets trickled down past the debt service for the 2020 bond. So you're looking at about 1.4 million unreserved balance, and we were projecting being able to pay for the shortfall of around 400,000 in the general out of this unreserved balance. So it looks like we're in better shape than we thought we would be for March's numbers. We don't know what April's gonna be, but, I mean, it was, it was a good March.
Yeah. Thanks, Colby. That, yeah, that was, that was good news. So we're, yeah, April, April will probably be tougher, but, go ahead, Wyman.
During committee meeting, there were some questions about our Vesta ballpark and the contract with the ball team. I put in the drop box the financial statements for the most recent month of the ballpark and the adjustment that we did in the annual lease. Their contract.
Wyman, will you pull that mic down just a little for us? Thank you.
Okay. Their contract has a clause in it that states that in a situation that we're, similar to what we're in now, that their rent for that year will be prorated based on the number of games they play. If they only play half the season, then they only have to pay half the rent. And it's yet to be determined if they're gonna play any games, and if so, how many games they're gonna play. But after that's determined, then we'll calculate the rent they pay for this year. We've still got over 900,000 in the maintenance account at the current time.
So, I, I know they've, they've committed whatever this season does, whether they play or not. If they don't play, there's no, there's really no wear and tear that would come out of scheduled maintenance. There'll be, there'll probably be some things that we still have to do, but, but Justin's made it clear that if, if they end up paying very little or no rent this year, that they'll, they'll certainly take that into consideration when they bring requests forward to the Public Facilities Board for improvements. So we, it shouldn't, it shouldn't hurt us in the long term of our, of our maintenance fund, 'cause we were way ahead on that anyway. Yeah. But hopefully they'll get to play some ball. We all want them to. So, okay, I don't have anything else. You have a motion adjourned? There it is. We're adjourned. Thank you.